I'm ready.
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. We're here for a special city council call meeting for Monday, July the 25th, 2020. And we, I mean, 2022, I'm sorry.
Whatever it is.
Uh, uh, the meeting will be called on order and this time we'll discuss what the pledge and go right into the agenda. Item which is item number two, which is discuss regarding proposed budget for fiscal year 2022 to 2023.
All right, I'll have your. We didn't get our. It's on the side, just hold down with that.
The certified rolls came in Friday, however, the tax office who does all the calculations and gives us our tax rates, said it'd be three to four days before I saw our packet. So we did kind of like we did a couple of years ago. If we'll go to the next slide, we, next slide. That's where all the information usually goes on that slide. But how at the bottom, I put the preliminary tax worksheet is the basis for the calculation and modifications will be made after certified rolls are received. So, okay, and that takes us to our budget assumptions can kind of notes. One of the things you're going to see this again when we get to capital, a lot of these, but we're going to be moving a tornado siren as well as adding another tornado siren for the community and industrial park. Uh, we adjusted the healthcare 10%. We're still waiting on an actual increase from our broker. Uh, we adjusted the life insurance for the additional increase of the basic life, which was 14.8. Uh, they didn't raise any of their other, you know, life packet parts. Uh, the capital at lay and major funds in total is over $2 million. Our, um, boulder, we added a boulder for Amsler Park at 12,000. And then for a remodel of either Bealy or Castings Park next year, we've added 15,000. Uh, we added some personnel. Uh, we utilized some of the ARPA funds to cover the personnel adjustments. Uh, we've included payroll adjustments as well as COLA for this next year. Uh, we're participating them out to text dot. If we get that grant, we were turned down this last year, but we're going to reapply. So we put in the 42,000, which is our matching part. And then, uh, of course, we, this is the second year that we've allocated parts of salaries for, um, the finance director, the city manager and fleet supervisor. And one of the new positions, if it's approved, is the accountant position, it'll also be allocated. Next. Uh, there's is the summary showing. We have 13 million in revenue and your, your 13 million in expenses and then your transfers in and out, uh, equal for a difference of 365,000 at the end of the year. And that's the 94,000 from the parks. The funds were put in there in previous years and now we're going to spend some of them. So that's why you have a negative 94,000 there. And the same with the, uh, ARPA grant. We received the funds last year and now we're going to spend some of them. So that's the negative. Next. You have com- combined revenues for all funds. Uh, you can see our charges for services are 45% of our revenue. Our, uh, land rent overall with all revenues is 10%. Sales tax is 13%. And then, uh, the general fund, next slide is just kind of a recap. You have that in your other packet I gave you as well. That shows what types of revenues and then the total that we're getting. And that last column is what we're budgeting. Uh, the other first column is actual for 2021 and then this year's budget and the actual year to date, which was through April. Next. And it will, if you noted, we had a balanced budget there. It was a zero difference at the bottom. So, uh, on our general fund revenue by source, now you'll see that the, while the land lease was 10% in the overall budget, it's 18% in the general fund budget. Property taxes are 42% and sales tax is 22. And then on our next slide, we'll see that the expenditures broken down by department. Uh, as you would expect, the police department is at 34%. Street is at 19%. And everybody else is, makes up the difference. I mean, those are the two big pieces. And then our next slide, we have the, uh, here's your new request for equipment. You've got the fire department, that's the sirens I just mentioned a while ago. The street department is looking for a crew cab and a pressure washer, road grader, GPS system and a broom sweeper. And then of course, uh. So in the police department, we've got two new patrol vehicles, maybe a new roof. We're waiting on some quotes for that, uh, some cameras and a new fence. And then parks, we have the remodel. Well, I moved that, sorry. That's, that should not be in there because I took that out. I just forgot to take it off this sheet. It's actually going to come out of the parks fund. And then we've got the boulder at Amsler Park. And then fleet maintenance, uh, has requested an AC recovery machine and 25 pounds of refrigerant. So our total general fund, well, in the, yeah, total general fund request of, that's not right. Yes, it is, 459,125,000. And then that, let me rephrase, 459,125. Okay, the next slide shows our utility fund. Oh, that's actually the other funds that, um, have requested capital, which is the cemetery annually, we put in 12,000. We're trying to get that, that whole area refenced. And then on the airport fund, we still have our CIP of 50,000. And then a, the park development fund, we're taking, um. Charlie has asked for 16,750 for us. There, the league is putting in 5,000. It's costing 21,750 is the quote to redo the sprinkler system or put in a new one. I don't know.
All the other fields were done last time we went through all the other fences and this stuff we're doing. The big field was not, we'll do the irrigation on it this year. And then depending on how that park fund does, we might go ahead and do the, uh, be out by fencing. Yeah, we'll be outfield fencing that stuff and finish that up.
Okay, and on the next slide, we have the, uh. I don't know why these are out of sequence with mine, but we have the utility fund. Uh, and you're show, we're showing five, six million in, in revenue and expense. Also, it's a balanced budget. Next. There we do have a 10% increase on the, uh, water and sewer. That is, we've received several, um, well, we received several notifications of like the, the chemical costs are going up for what we pay, the lab fees are going up. Uh, gas, I can tell you my normal bill three months ago was eight, nine thousand. This month it was 20,000. So fuel costs are rising, uh, and so, um.
Also wholesale water price to us is going up 10%.
Yeah, so, uh, it's just kind of like. And so then what they've asked for in capital water production has asked to paint Ninth Street and a box truck. We deferred the generator at Ninth and the generator at Hercules because we're working with the Grant Works, trying to get a grant that will cover both of those items. So, uh, the utility maintenance is requesting a couple of trucks, a backhoe, a utility trailer, a mini excavator and the power unit for the ICS saw. The trailer, the excavator and the mini, uh, and the ICS saw unit were all deferred last year. So we just brought them back again for this year.
Get the oldest backhoe? Or are we going to get rid of the oldest backhoe and the rest of them?
Yes, sir.
I know we got one that's pretty loosey goosey.
The, uh, and I, I didn't know how we wanted to do that one, but. Uh, the wastewater treatment plant, they're asking for a six inch trash pump, a sidewalk and slab, a fence and a truck. Their total for the utility fund is 893 for their capital requests. And then on EDC. The EDC, uh, actually board has met and reviewed their, their charges and their revenues and have approved what we've done. We put almost or right at 200,000 in contingency. So they anticipate getting that much more than what we will spend. Next. Is the hotel motel at the rate we're going, we projected around 40,000 for this next year. Uh, we are using it for marketing to pay for some marketing currently. And so I'm assuming we'll continue to do that. Uh, then the exchange, the exchange, um, their revenue, they project 141.5, but their total expenditures are 221. So from the park development fund, we'll be pulling 79,718 so that, or what it takes. I mean, if it's less than that, then it'll be less than that. But that's how we balance that budget. Then on the executive airport. We budgeted 295.6 with 286.7 as our expenditures. And then they're going to transfer out 888.68. That's for the admin fee, uh, which is just a percentage of their hangar rent. And so, uh, they have a balanced budget as well. And the next one, we have the cemetery fund and we're projecting 43.5 as next year's revenue and expenditures equal to that. And then next is, should be our debt. And it is, this is the general fund debt. This is the debt that comes out of our tax rate. Uh, and you can see it's 820, 841 total for all the different pieces. And then the next slide is our total debt. If you'll see, you see transfer in from utility fund. That's for the utility debt that they have, they transfer. And so, um, and then we have the INS coming in for the general fund side for a total of 1,702. And you'll see our payments is, are also 1,702. Next. Then this is just kind of showing you the assessed value and estimated actual value of our taxable property by year. Just to kind of, this year it's, they, they did, uh, I haven't got it broken down yet by real and personal, but the total was 601 million for what came from the tax office. And we still have a million five under review. Okay, and the next one. The next slide just shows you the, uh, the tax rates, um, that we've had over the years and then what the ISD and Midway and McLennan County and McLennan Community College have had. So that, just for a comparison for you. We get this, this is actually, both those documents are in our last audit. So you probably have already seen them. Uh, the next slide is our current rate for M and O and our INS rates. You'll see what they would generate at today's valuation. Of course, last year it was at a different valuation, so it didn't raise that much money just to make sure that I clarify. But then when you do the voter approval tax rate, you're seeing where it's, uh, M and O is, is like two cents less and we are going to generate $84,000 less in M and O. And then you see the same thing in INS, it dropped two cents, so then it's 108. And then when you look at a $100,000 home, uh, the difference is $32.13 in total. You know, you, you pay $14.02 less than M and O and 18.11 less in INS. And then that's really what tonight is about. We get down to our current rate is .546945. The vote, the, uh, voter approval rollback rate, what it used to be called, is .514814 right now, as far as we know. And then the no new revenue effective rate is .541173.
What's the difference between the 54 and 51?
The no new revenue is, is the effective rate. That's where.
Money wise.
Oh.
Cash, what is the 54?
I don't know, I'd have to calculate.
Eight percent.
It should be eight percent, that's what the.
Eight percent is voter rate and then no new growth or no new money is three and a half percent?
The no new money means you can bring in the exact same amount of money as you brought in the year before. They make it to where you don't.
Except you get the increase for growth.
I'll double check.
Better.
Okay. No, we don't ever adopt that one. We always adopt the voter approval tax rate. That's the one that means, that's the rollback rate. That's the one that has, has.
That's three and a half percent.
It's eight actually, but you only get three and a half. I mean, it does, it, it's a weird calculation. It's like 16 pages long now. Right, Renee?
Yes.
The good news is that at 601 million, your overall evaluation is with almost 100 million.
Yeah, we went up, I believe it was 19%, something like that. So, but really that's what tonight, you just have to, I mean, I want you to have a look at it. And then of course you have this stuff to study. But I, I just need to know which rate y'all would, you know, if you want to go with, you don't want to go with the de minimis, that's super high. And it's because you can add $500,000 to your, your, um, taxes without, I mean, it's just a new thing they came up with, uh, two years ago, I guess it was. And we haven't ever done that. Uh, whether you want to go with the no new revenue rate or the voter approval tax rate, because that will determine how the, how this is put together. It was put together with the voter approval rate only because that's what we've done prior. But that is y'all's decision. The voter approval is the rollback rate. The old time rollback, before they changed all the names.
So does it require us to go to vote?
No, only if we exceed it. So it's, it's the same rules as, as before, just different names. Yes. At least this year I don't have to have notes, which one is which. Yeah, it, it is. After you've called it the same thing for 20 some years, it's hard to, you know, all of a sudden it's something new. Correct, that, that did change. That was a change a couple of years ago. Yes, correct. And that's the other thing we have to do tonight is for us, not only decide which rate we want to use and knowing that, that it's going to be modified once I get the report from the county, uh, but also to set the public hearing date, so.
What's your calendar for show the public hearing date for?
I don't know, adoption on August the 16th.
And the one on the 14th? No, 15th and 16th?
15th and 16th.
Okay.
There's August the 4th is maybe where to make a note. That's the publication of the notice.
Okay. Yes, and that's the other reason why we have to call this one in the last, end of July is because we have to get it to the newspaper so they could get it published, you know, we have to get it there on Tuesday in order for them to get it published in the Thursday paper, so.
So the new people would be, uh, police officer by current?
Yeah, that's not even, that's not in, in here, correct. Yes, yes.
Accountants?
Yes, we've got a labor and water, a labor and wastewater, um, an support assistant manager. Quite the, there you go. A, uh, accountant and finance, accounts payable slash file folder, accounts payable. Uh, part-time help for the exchange, uh, that's all year. And then part-time, uh, temporary help for the exchange for four months. While Cassie's out.
Cassie's out?
Well, I mean, I don't think you want me to have twins on the floor.
I think you ought to bring them. I, I believe in children at the office. Accountants?
Yes.
We're going to hire a caliber person that once you're through with them, they can take your place.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's the one place I definitely would have a, uh, what's the word? What'd you say?
Qualified.
Qualified? No, yes, but.
Certified?
How good Martin is now?
A really good one.
Now I can believe the crowd wasn't saying, it's like being at home with my wife.
Okay, what are we going to do now?
Transition plan, we'll have a transition plan.
So all of this, the prices here, are that a part that's going to be added for us to the budget for this year? All of them?
I nodded. Yes. It's all in there now. I mean, it's in, all of that is what's included in.
So assuming that it sits, then we're covered with the exception of whatever adjustment the county tax office makes on our last calculation. We may have to make some adjustments there. It's a lot to take in, you've got the budget book, go through it item by item if you wish. If you have a question, start with Carolyn and then if you need to go deeper, certainly department heads will come in and visit back and forth. There's nothing in here carved in concrete. If there's something we're going in the wrong direction, let us know. And also, I might add, we are under a deadline, but there's nothing in the world that keeps you from adopting a budget and then turning around and amending it at the very next meeting. So it's not like there's anything in here that's carved in stone, but it gives us an idea of the direction we're going. Directions can change, but we do have to have a document put in place and adopted by a certain date. This is the start. It's got basically a month. And you take anything you want to put along, talk about, this is about, dive deeper into understand, we're here for that and certainly encourage it. Pretty much we're in the same direction we've been going through right now. And you're fortunate enough to have some new stuff coming on the tax rolls. Good Lord willing, the economy doesn't completely collapse. And if it does, it will come back and we'll get started back again. We'll adjust very quickly if we see that happen. I assure you, I've been through one of those once before and I learned a very important lesson, don't wait until most adjust, wait a week and adjust at most.
You know, on the personnel side, I just wanted to ask this. Okay, so all of the, down to, of course, the part-time help and temporary help. So all the other ones are, is like for permanent, right?
They're full time.
So I'm saying, full time, okay, and so I'm saying, so the, the part-time help will come off and then it said they're temporary help, which was for four months. So, so I'm saying that those two part, therefore it's.
No, the part-time help is for the whole year. It's just part-time, it's less than twenty hours a week.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yes, sir.
But the temporary help is only for four months?
Yes, sir.
So the part-time help would be, but it's for a full year? Yeah. Okay.
Just four months?
For the temporary help is more facility maintenance.
No, but just four months?
For the temporary, yes.
You're going to be kind of out for four months?
I should only out eight weeks. We're going to train them and get them ready and make sure.
Try to get you on record. Just want to get you on record.
I'm hoping it'll be a week. But we're praying.
We are, well. When do they think they'll have the phone, when they'll be ready for the tax office?
Can they tell me three to four next, this morning?
So when we get that, we can turn around and send everybody up an update. Well, you ready to do that?
We'll go to item number three. Uh, we're just discussing possible action regarding approval of a proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three tax rate to report due to McLennan County Property Tax Department for publication and notification of a public hearing if required. So.
You're recommending the rollback rate?
The voter, or.
Voter approved rate, I'm sorry.
Voter approved rate.
Gosh.
Sorry.
I go all the way back from nineteen eighty to the Pete Bill, the rollback rate for all of that. And now it's voter approved, that the voters don't get voted on. That's six.
I'll make a motion, we take the voter rate. I accept that.
I second.
Okay, it's been ruled in, in second that we approve the voter approval tax rate for fiscal year twenty, what was it? Twenty twenty-two to twenty, twenty twenty-three. The end of discussion. And all them favorable motions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All disapproved signify by saying no. Ayes have it. We'll go to item number four. Let's see. So this the, the public hearing for?
No, this is just you announcing the public hearing, the dates. You can just read exactly what's on the agenda. It's just an announcement.
Okay, um, we're holding a public hearing on tax rate and, and, and a public hearing on proposed tax, for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget on August fifteenth and the final adoption of the budget and tax rate on August sixteen, twenty twenty-two. They got it?
Yes.
My only announcement is, this is a lot to take in, it's a short meeting, it's a starting. Go through here, if you have any questions, you get Carolyn to call. We'll go deep as long as you can, make sure we all, you've got a pretty good crew that's been working on this for a while. You've had a pretty decent year, even without C three being occupied fully. And I think it's pretty good to go. I feel very comfortable with the fact that it was balanced when it was handed to me, make me real happy. Shall I say that again? The fact that it was balanced when you handed it to me, makes me very happy with all of you.
Are there any comments from any, you know, councilman? Uh, there aren't none. Some meetings adjourned at seven fifteen.
Thank you, folks, for your hard work. Thank you, Carolyn, for going crazy.